Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every substance. Plating your fire exits up to your left and right. If there's an incident, you'll be notified. Please leave in a nice orderly fashion. Excuse me, please. Open the meeting for Comets Republic at this time.
Uh, oops. Earthquake. That was an earthquake. Just my usual little request for the board to keep thinking about doing something for, you know, saving Wyeth, keeping the plant here. I know you've been assured by Betty Little, Senator Betty Little, that she was going to be doing something about a week or so ago. My wife received a reply from a letter she'd written to her. Bruce Waller in the town received a reply and another gentleman received the exact same reply saying that the losing of the over-the-counter stuff at Wyeth was just speculation. But that was the last layoff, the last layoff, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Dennis, but that's pretty much closed the OTC at Wyeth. So my wife called and she did get a reply, but Betty Little said that they've been apparently misled or whatever. So we've got to keep after her. She's sending out letters saying that everything is fine when they're not fine. Another gentleman wrote a letter to Chris Ortloff and he replied, he wrote specifically about the Empire Zone and asked why Wyeth hadn't been included in that. And he says there is another round of that going around. Our county legislator, Celine Paquette, is part of that group that is looking at the Empire Zone. So I would hope the board would contact her, maybe write her a letter from the board asking her to please include Wyeth in the Empire Zone. We give tax breaks to companies coming in. There's not a company that's going to come in that's going to pay the salaries and be as stable as Wyeth has been in the last 70 years. So anything we give to other companies ought to be included with Wyeth. And if that means going in an Empire Zone, then I'm all for it. And like I said, our county legislator is on that committee and she ought to be representing us and she ought to be notified. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Calvin. And I took a couple of notes there. You're right, I had asked about the Empire Zone and we said the last round, Wyeth was excluded.
But there's another round coming around according to Assemblyman Ortloff and Celine is on that.
We shall contact her.
Well, contact her.
And her.
She's the one that makes the decision. He doesn't, he's not the, apparently not the decision maker. It's this committee that recommends. And from there, they make the decisions. So if they don't get the recommendation, they can't make that decision.
That's true. I'll talk to Celine, too.
Well, I think it ought to come from the board.
Anybody else? Close the section this time. You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of September 19th. You'll have copies. Is there any additional deletions? If I object to motion?
I'll accept the, I'll make motion except the minutes as written.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, you'll have copies of the bills. Is there any additional deletions? Thank you, Honorable Senator.
I'll make a motion to pay the.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
We received a card of thanks. It reads, "Members of the village board, thank you for your continued support in our attempt to bring quality historical and cultural events to our beautiful village. We have had another very successful year," and signed Rouse's Point in Champlain Historical Society. Thank you all, we have your correspondence.
Thank you, Phil. I have one. And I don't know what it is, but I had it here a second ago. It's from the North Country Chamber of Commerce and it's on the border crossing. And they want us to write a resolution or in support of something different than having passports to come across the border. And I don't know if trustee Jefferson, oh, there it is right on me. Trustee Jefferson, hesitant to say, but it says, "There's an outline," and it says, "Stop the official position and submit a resolution of letter by the end of October and how to instructions and how to and so are contained in the following issue alert." And they send us an alert. And what it is, is that by 2007, everyone's going to have to have a passport. You know what it costs to get a passport? A hundred bucks. Is there, they are looking for alternative ways of passing, especially to people that live along the border. That, you know. So I'm asking the board, do they want to send a letter of resolution of supporting the chamber?
Good idea.
Do you need a motion, Phil?
Oh, I'll make a motion then, too.
Phil will have to draft some, someone of his beautiful resolutions.
Write a letter urging, you know, homeland security not to implement the 2007 requirement for passports to cross, not just the Canadian border, but it's the Mexican border also. So it's millions of people that's going to back.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson is seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And I have that whole alert right here, Phil. And that's it. Reports of mayor trustees. There is a meeting of backup. That is where we buy our incremental power on the 27th of October at 10:00 a.m. in Syracuse. I am going to check this week when we're in Syracuse whether or not it's worthwhile going down to that meeting, although there is, excuse me, there is a lot going on with our incremental power and that Northeast Utilities no longer wants to supply it. And so we're going to be looking at other suppliers. I'm sure that Mr. Malane will have some words of wisdom. So we still have another meeting. I think that later than the 21st of October, we have a meeting. So we have so little time on this. You should all have a thing from Rick's locks and keys, the library and the rec center here. The library's $1,339. And I have talked to our set about this and said, "We could take this out of Wellywood there, it's not money." And put them on the master system like we have for the rest of our, the rest of the village. And the rec center is $167 to put this room on there so that we don't have to give them another key until it's all on the master system. You should have that in your backup.
So you're not talking about the front door of the rec center?
No, 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 just this door.
The boardroom door.
Boardroom door.
Then the whole village will be under the key system, right?
Well, yeah, most, yeah, I think all the villages will be done and then it'll be spotted, the locks inside, so that they all, you know, and that can be out over a period of years. But if he locks up the locker rooms and stuff at later dates, we can get that all on one master system.
Are there people though who use different areas that you might not want to give a master key to?
Absolutely, that's not a problem. You give them the key for that door.
So for example, anyone who normally uses the boardroom would need?
They can have a boardroom key, but your key as a master key will fit it so you don't have to have the second key. Mike will, master key will fit it so he doesn't have that second key.
Right, I understand that.
Every door is separate. Every door is separate, but it's in the master system.
Right.
Do we have a problem with the key, Phil, or something?
I think that's what I'm trying to, still understand. We're trying to figure out why the key here and the key to the village coming in the back.
He's talking. I had talked to him about that when he was up here. The white key was strictly for the police department, police officers, and that overrode several other keys. And that's the reason why this building work, this building has to be put on that so they can come in this building.
But the police department is very concerned that other people will have white keys to access.
I don't think we're going to issue white keys out.
Because I know he's very concerned.
Yeah. I don't think we're going to issue white keys out after talking with Bob. And I didn't realize that the white key was restricted strictly to the police department so that if there's a problem in the building, they could get in on it. It's just for building interest.
Who has the list of which keys belong to?
Becky has a complete list.
Do you have a list?
And these keys for the library, I don't really get into it, but I guess I have to.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
They requested certain number of keys because they were going to hand them out to certain people and they are not going to hand out any keys. They will come into the village and sign for a key. It's a village building and we'll have a control.
Each time that employees of the library?
Yep. They'll have, they'll sign for a key that we know who's got those keys.
Every time they report to work?
No, 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 no. They go in and sign out, they get a key.
The initial issuance.
Initial issue of a key.
Right. But it just seems to me that we've got so many colored keys going around now that it's become very difficult to be tracked of. I know when I got my key for the new locks here on this building, it wasn't the same key that I was supposed to have. And I know Becky even had some confusion with her list because it just seems like we have so many different colored keys. Is there a way that we could?
I talked with her, and we got Rick up here last week and we got it very nice. He doesn't have a problem with it.
Well, this was prior to last week, but every time we add a new building with a new level of security for that key, it seems to me that it just, I don't know. People look a lot.
Our keys can open just about anything.
They open everything.
Okay.
Except, except two things. You cannot open a lock on a transformer and you cannot get into the substation. And that's for obvious reasons. We don't need to get those keys out. They are completely separate. But if you take a look at the only keys you got from the village, and you can narrow that down to one or two keys.
What doors are the libraries that go in effect?
Front door and back door and the upstairs and downstairs. And the Ross Room will be completely key separate.
Nobody?
The library will not have access to the Ross Room, believe it or not. That is strictly.
What color is that going to be?
I have no idea at this point.
Is that going to be white?
No, 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 no. White, white's a master. White is a master key.
And red's a master.
Yeah. But the red overrides a white.
See what I mean? This is what I mean.
Just try your key.
But Kelly, you don't really need to know that. You really need to know that a red key opens everything. A white key is strictly for the police department so that they can go into buildings if there's a problem. And the rest of it is, Michael Brown's got a light blue key that takes care of the rec center.
Right.
Dark blue key takes care of the blue building and the village office. The water plant, but they got their color, whatever, it might be green or shark poop or somebody else, I don't know. The red key rides over everything. The white key rides over buildings. And the people that need to know, know and that's it.
What color is this door going to be?
This, this color will be the same color that the rec center is. The same key that fits the front door will fit this door.
Now there's my next question. Do you want everyone who's got a front door key in the rec center?
No, 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 I said that wrong. I said it wrong. That would, the door will be separate, but it's on the master of this building. Each building has its own master. That's why you have a color code. Right? And a red key overrides it all. And a white key overrides the outside doors.
That's pretty easy.
It's simple.
Just try your key.
I know where my keys work, you know, so. And the object of this whole thing is, is that we've had fire calls and we've got to wait for somebody to come to open a building for us. And that is not a good situation. Especially when you're up to the sewer plant and you've got to wait for somebody to unlock the gate in order to go in. Either that or you cut your, cut your, cut the lock and you've got to go in. Now the gate, gate lock and the building lock are the same. And the red key that's in the fire truck, that's in the knock box, fits those, overrides it. And overrides every building key there is. They have one key, that's all they got to worry about. Anyway, upset. Do you want to approve this? Yes.
Yes, make a motion.
I don't see why we need a new lock for this door. I can understand the library because I know there was a fire call at the library and people couldn't get in and they had to call Gary at the water plant. That was in the summer and I understand that. But it just seems to me that we're, we're really.
Well, I can tell you, Kelly, we'll do it this way. If, for instance, something happens in this room, then we have the fire department come in the front door and bust the door down to get in.
Well, George, it's a wooden door. If there's a fire in this room, are we really worried about the door?
I'm just saying, that's what will happen.
A few pennies to get another key in the lock, then we can just do it and deal with it.
I think, and I think it's for, we set this up a couple of years ago. It was set up so that each building would be separate and that each building could have a master system and you would, they, the people that work here could only have, need one key. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Brian made it.
Whoever.
And Junior. Anybody opposed?
I'm opposed.
Well, I vote aye. Okay, that's it, I think, for me. Trustee Penfield.
At the last board meeting, we announced that we had our first meeting of our planning board and we did have a resignation earlier in the year. Michael Letourneau, whose family actually moved out of the village, resigned from his position on the planning board. So we would like to actually offer Mr. Jeanette, who is also, Mr. Donald Jeanette, who is also a member of the planning board as an alternate, we'd like to offer his name to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Letourneau. And that would be through April of '06 when we have our next organizational meeting. So I'd like to make a motion that we change Mr. Jeanette's status and we offer him as a full member of the planning board through April of '06 to fill the unexpired term of Michael Letourneau.
Second. Motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Phil, do you plan to let him know that he needs to file a new offer? Should I give him a call?
I'll send him a letter.
Okay, good. All right. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, the first item on my agenda tonight is I would make a motion to request an executive session to discuss administrative personnel.
Got it.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call, vote. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
And the second item on my agenda is to make a motion to request an executive session to discuss civic center personnel.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call, vote. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Moore.
Yes, I got three things. Okay. First, is request permission for Brian Downlow and Eugene Flair to attend a one-day training seminar sponsored by the New York Rural Water Association that will start November 9th at a total cost of $22. I'd like to make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, I got one more, two more, please. At the last board meeting, revised sewer rent resolution was passed, which went into effect October 1st. I'd like to move the following resolution, which would also eliminate the waiving of water rent as well. Whereas the board of trustees of Village Ross Point deems it necessary to amend the current waiver of a minimum charge of $4 or $0.03 per month for debt services charges for water rents and residential uses, which became effective June 1, 2003. Therefore, be a result that effective November 1st, 2005, there will be no waiver of debt services charges for water rents for residential uses. I'd like to make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call, vote. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Phil, if you can help me on this, an update to close ours flight to the town of Champlain.
Chief Water Plant Operator Malinsky, myself, and Administrator Baharno reviewed the letter that we received from the town of Champlain in response to our comments for supplying water to the town of Champlain by the village. And after this review, we then consulted with the Clinton County Department of Public Health and met with them to go over some of the specific points of the letter, the response from the village, the town of Champlain. And after gathering all this information and talking with the health department officials, I'd sort of recommendation to the board that we continue dialogue with the town of Champlain to pursue this opportunity of providing water to the town of Champlain. The key thing that came from these meetings and our discovery is that the success is going to be hinged upon a good agreement, a legal agreement between the two municipalities. And that's where village attorney Tom Ane comes in. He represents the town of Beakman Town. Beakman Town currently purchases water from the town of Platsburg, so he has some experience there. Also, there's a good example of intermunicipal cooperation in the town of Jay and the town of Black Brook. And that goes across a county line also. So there's a couple of examples out there of successful cooperation between municipalities. And so we recommend that a next step be that this board consider setting up an ad hoc committee or intermunicipal ad hoc committee or task force between the village and the town. Perhaps not the full boards like we had at our initial meeting, but a subset of each of the boards and perhaps people from the community at large to get together to start talking about the issues like the rates and then most importantly, getting the attorney involved so that we get a win-win agreement and protect the village and the village's taxpayer. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to know if you have any idea what the rate is with Beakman Town and Platsburg.
I have a little bit and it's very complicated. Okay. And basically, like we said before, the double, the two times factor that we have in our village code is supportable and typical. And, and our rate is so favorable that two times a small rate is still small. And I stand by that. With the town of Platsburg, for example, they don't double the rate, but they've got it set up so it's quite complicated where they have a out-of-district rate and then they have an O&amp;M cost and then they have a distribution line cost and then they have a per gallon cost. So if you add them all up, and I haven't completed an analysis, that would come through this task force's effort. But it's kind of like, when we can say, oh, it's double, it scares people, but then if we break it up into many parts, then maybe they won't be as scared. So we'll have to see what we come up with. But if you're out of the district, you pay more, it's just obvious.
Originally, when we started, because we never thought people would want to purchase a large amount of water, so we set the figure up double outside the village. But now because this has come up, boy, it could be a lot of money for the village, you know. I don't miss a bolt.
Absolutely. I think we have to look at it and keep dialogue going. And I think, just like Calvin wants to see intermunicipal cooperation on the Wyeth front, I think perhaps this water committee could lead, you know, and set an example for other ventures.
The only venture this could be with the elections coming up, Phil. Could be changing the guard here pretty soon.
Well, the next guard has to pick up the collar.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's all I got.
Thank you, trustee Moore.
Oh my God, we're down to the clerk and he's got an armful.
That's right, dear. I'll try to make it as quick and painless as I can. The first item I have here is workers' compensation. I believe you folks remember we changed our workers' compensation for the fire department to safety group 497 back, I believe it was summer, early fall. I'd like your approval to do the same for workers' compensation for the rest of the employees in the village. I have a preliminary estimate that a premium for this year, starting January 1, with the safety group 497, come in at about $36,300, which is around $4,000 to $5,000 less than we're currently paying through the state insurance fund. I would like to note that if, and depending on our experience rating within that safety group, we have the potential of receiving a year-end dividend next year. This past year, it's been running 30 percent. So we could be down, if all these things are favorable, we could be down to around a $28,000 bill per year as opposed to what we're currently paying of around $41,000. At a minimum, we're going to save $4,000 right off the bat and even if we had a bad year, that's still pretty good. So I'm asking for the board's approval to change our carrier from the state insurance fund to the New York State Public Entity Safety Group number 497. And I'm asking somebody to move that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the second thing I would like to do, I would like the board to move that we change our broker of record to the LeBarge Agency effective immediately. I have developed a very thorough working relationship with Andre LeBarge. She has spent considerable amount of time during the last three years I've been here in updating our policies. She's a salesperson, she wants to sell insurance, but I think she really has the welfare of the village and the concern for coverage. I'm very comfortable with her and I would like to put all our insurance in her hands. So I'm asking, we have most of it there now, but I'm asking to change her as our agent of record. I'm asking somebody to move that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion?
No, I just want to mention that Phil spent a lot of time in insurance with the village and picked up our coverage. You know, appreciate what, a lot of time that he spent.
It's a big item and it is something that we really, you know, need to be very positive on.
Cover our assets, that's the bottom line.
That's exactly, yeah. Among other things.
Yeah, it's got you. All in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And my last item, I gave you folks all copies of this and I feel very, very strong about this as well. Currently, the fire department accidental death and dismemberment policy, just as an example for you, our employees, our fire folks are covered currently for if they become injured while fighting a fire. They're currently covered for $100 weekly disability benefit. They are currently covered for $10,000 for active accidental death or dismemberment. There are several pieces to this accidental death and dismemberment insurance for the fire department. Those are two key pieces. I asked, one of, this was something Ms. LeBarge brought up and asked if I would be interested in looking at it because she felt our coverage hadn't been reviewed in years, which it hasn't had, it's been 20 years. She put a proposal together for ESAP. It would change the two key pieces, the accidental death and dismemberment for our firemen from $10,000 to $20,000 and it would increase the injury and sickness weekly benefit from $100 to $300. The other thing, this policy, and I asked her to provide it because it's something we did not have, would be to add benefits for our auxiliary department. Currently, they have no coverage. In other words, if they're performing something at the fire department, they're working at our, our summer event that we have and somebody gets hurt, this would. our summer event that we have and somebody gets hurt, this would protect them as well. It's going to increase what we are currently paying for that accidental death and dismemberment by approximately $1,400, $1,500 a year. It's going to make the annual premium around $2,475. I, I feel for $1,500 additional, I think it's well worth it. The money that we're saving on the workers' compensation policy will more than offset that and if we get a dividend on the workers' comp, it'll even make it more worthwhile. I really think this is a very nice policy. I think it's something we should look at for the fire department and their families to protect them. And if anyone is interested in moving the adoption of this, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you'd say a bye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
One thing too, before I forget, we have a, we have a power outage. This is going to be put in the paper, I believe, in the next couple of days. It says the village has a power outage scheduled for Saturday, October 50, 2005, from 7:00 in the morning till 12 noon, approximately 12 noon. The purpose of this outage is to complete the upgrade to our substation, a rain date scheduled for Sunday, October 16th, at the same time. It goes on, if inclement weather exists for the entire weekend, another date will be scheduled for Saturday, October 22nd, again with a rain date for Sunday, October 23rd. So, this is our switch over of our, get our substation online. So, I just wanted to read that. I have another thing too, I'd just like to, to mention to the board. The AutoCAD program and printer that, or that Doug's group has been working on, the infrastructure mapping. Our electric department has been using the maps that have been provided, marking the different transformers and, and poles that were required to do under stray voltage. They're going to be going back to Earth Science for update into the system, so we have that in order to meet our January requirement. Actually, it's the end of November, but we have to have the report out by January. In order to be able to utilize the program that Earth Science has been working on for the last couple of years, we need AutoCAD program, we need two licensing agreements that tune of about $900 apiece, and we need a printer capable of printing these maps from, from that software. That printer is around $2,400, $2,500. I spoke with Brian and he has the money in the electric department, albeit not in the budget, that he feels, you know, that we certainly need to use in order to be in compliance with stray voltage. So, I'm just letting you folks know that we are going to be purchasing that and why we're doing it. Where's going? The one licensing agreement is going in my office, the other license is going on Mike Petro's computer. And this AutoCAD is going to be very beneficial because Mike and his business will be able to utilize this and print maps as well. And in fact, we're hoping that, we're working with this, but we're hoping Clinton Community College will offer us an intro to AutoCAD. And I have an idea that Mike, myself, Brian, maybe one or two from our electric department, if they're willing to do it, I would like to take the course. So, we'll talk about that if it comes about and we can have the course, you know, have the course, so.
Need a motion tonight, Phil, to buy that or?
Well, do I need a motion to buy that or Dana, Brian has the money, or what should we do?
I'm sure you could.
Non-budgeted item. So, yeah, I would ask that motion to buy two licensing agreements for approximately $900 each and a printer, large, what they call a large format printer, and it's approximately $2,500. So, between the two of them, you're talking $18 and $24, about $4,200.
I'll make that motion. Motion by trustee Jefferson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Moore. Any other discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you'd say a bye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And I have another item. Another rule. We've been searching for someone to clean the village office. We've contacted a few people. People have come over and looked at it, not interested, others have thought about it and before they even got over, changed their mind. We had a lady by the name, she, her real name is Marion Leduke, but she goes by the name Sue. Seems like a very nice lady. She visited our offices today. She's interested in cleaning our office. We currently have money budgeted at the amount of $85 a week and at this point, unless she comes and changes her mind, she's willing to, to clean the village office. I brought her around second floor, first floor of the police department today and she's willing to do this. I showed her what we wanted done, what we would like to have done, and she's willing to do it and she comes highly recommended. She does house cleaning in the village. So, even though it's a budgeted item, I'd like approval to hire her on a monthly contract basis as opposed to a yearly contract basis at $85 a week. What kind of form of motion?
Any second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion?
Yeah, what happened to Carmen? That's a different joke. Carmen, like, she still works over at the.
Library.
Or the library.
No other discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you'd say a bye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And I'm done.
Thank you, Phil. All right, Sam?
The only thing I have is to remind the people that haven't paid their taxes, this is the last month of paying before they turn over to county on November 1st. Is that really good? We start the death row down there. Oh, no, no, no.
Excuse me, yours.
I'll say, Mike.
I'm quiet.
Oh, Melissa.
Okay. All right. I'm going to be quick compared to the clerk. I, first of all, I would, I'm requesting an appointment to the prioritization committee for the Main Street program. We have two allocations in with checks. We have, I think, four others arrived that are there and we're waiting for the deposits. It's going to very soon be time to, to decide which building's debt priority status for the money. And the Friends of the North Country has asked for two representatives from the village. I, I would request if the board will approve that you appoint myself and Clerk Administrator Baharnwa. The coordination of the IEP money is really going to be very important as we figure out the match on this and that is Phil's, definitely Phil's area of expertise, so.
I don't know, she did volunteer again, Phil.
I raised my hand.
No, exactly. Any motion for that?
I'll put it in the form of a motion that put Phil and Melissa on the prioritization committee.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote whether you'd say a bye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And we do have the criteria that will be used. I included in your packets. If you have any questions, just let me know. It's, it's always difficult when you're deciding where to put the grant money, but we tried to put everything out front in terms of how buildings would be prioritized. If the board is willing, I would request a special board meeting on October 11th, that's a Tuesday, at 4:00, if, if that works for you. That would be a special meeting to award the bids on the boat launch project. We save a week if we do that, if we do it before your next meeting and this time of year, every week counts. The bids will be in tomorrow at 1:00. That will give our engineer time to review and make a recommendation.
Motion on that, Phil, or I'll make that motion that we'll have an executive, or a special board meeting on October 11th to review the bids for the boat launch.
Second.
What's made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore.
Can we repeat the time again?
At 4:00, if that works for all of you. Warlock.
I didn't write the village office. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote whether you'd say a bye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And my last item is a travel request to attend the New York Planning Federation annual meeting in Saratoga on the 10th and 11th of October.
I'll make a motion that we'll listen going up.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Want to be public at this time?
Hmm, yep. I've got something. Okay.
The boat launch area will be closed as of Monday because our people have got to start work down there, taking some material out and, and then we hope that the contractor can be in there. So, it will be roped off and closed.
Roped along, good.
Until the contractors can come.
Till the geese come back and spring.
Probably will be.
Yeah, all right.